This meeting of Gloucester School Committee to honor, I'll remind everybody that the mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successfully engaged lifelong learners and lastly join me in the floor. Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If there is anybody here who would like to address the school committee under oral communications, this is your opportunity. The public shall have the opportunity at every regular school committee meeting to be heard under oral communications. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to the school committee business to appear before the school committee, state their problem without debate, and the matter may be referred to the proper subcommittees. Items that are on the agenda of the public may address the school committee with the permission of the chair. Person speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes. Each and shall submit a copy of their prepared communication to the recording secretary. The school committee shall not allow complaints as to individual performance or character.
Hello. I'm Linda McDonald. I live at 18 Lejmont Avenue, and I'm going to talk about Green Street Park. You have heard many of us, if weren't to, speak about our opposition to having a school or anything else built on our Green Street Park. It's our one small open space. Educated and informed neighbors have shared our concerns about the lack of play area for our children and the children in the city, concerns about the loss of wildlife, concerns about the sound, light, and air pollution, and the overuse of surrounding area, and our aching needs as valuable citizens of Gloucester with the right of a safe and healthy You all have listened to us, but these things have not changed. The driving forces are finances and expediency, and Green Street Park still is on your list, unlike fines for development. So what can change the outcome? Does it change things that the area marked by the city includes the Janine Dogsett Playground and the Fisherman Memorial Park, which was dedicated in 1920s? Are these dedicated parks also at risk? Were these what was needed to research in order to find out whether they could be scooped up into the area for the building? When the moraine was filled, the exception, and you can see it if you've ever been to the field, you can see the slice of hill and the woodland. The woodland, all that woodland, is Fisherman's Memorial Park. So when they filled the field, they at least preserved that park. Is it still safe, or is that something that might be lost as well? Does it change things? Speaking of the field, that when the city obtained Fuller, they wanted a larger playing field for the school, and so they filled the moraine, the swamp, and all the wetlands that were up there. The whole top of the hill has always been wet and a moraine. And they cut the trees and filled it, but the filled area has not ever been able to be used as a field because of the wetness, because of the unevenness, and because of the sinkholes that would open up for at least the first 10 years. I used to worry about my daughter up there, whether she would break away. The holes would maybe open up on top of the ground about that big, and you could look down, way down, into the earth. That's the area that we're thinking about building a school. Does that change anything? What else? I have it all in order here, sorry folks. Has it changed things that there are now going to be 200 housing units to be built on site? Were they included in the original enrollment projection data sent to the state? Can that information be amended now? I was at the presentation meeting at the City Council, and these questions were asked. And though it was difficult to hear clearly, it sounded as if both of the answers to those questions were no. Does that mean that what we're planning is already not going to be enough for these 200 units? No more. So, is there a plan, or has there been any thought about students of Oak, Maple, Fran, Taylor, East Main, and how they will access the site? Will they drive up Mount Vernon to Dead End Perkins, drive up Sadler to Dead End Green Street, drive up to a Dead End Lejmont? What about the traffic conditions? Has this ever been considered? And what about the walkers? They'll be walking up Sadler or Mount Vernon, Lejmont or Green Perkins to get to the school? Have we thought about the safety and the hazards or the busing expenses for this? East Gloucester wants their school. Green Street Park does not. When can the needs, the health concerns, and safety of the citizens be weighed above expediency and finances? Thank you.
Thank you. There will be a ward meeting held at City Hall next Monday. I believe it starts at 6:00, and at that point, we'll be in a position to answer some of those questions. Some of them, many of them, are still not even, we haven't gotten to the point where they're under consideration. Recognizations. In a slow couple of weeks, any recognitions?
Vacation.
Vacation?
Yeah, we have a vacation.
Well, recognize that everybody on vacation had a good time, right? Students are not here. I assume they're all playing sports, because spring sports are in full swing. Just to direct, we were made an attempt to recognize the winter sports athletes at this meeting, but none, half of them couldn't come to throw a ball in the spring sport, so that's... We will do that at some time when we can actually get them all on the place. Consent agenda. Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So, second?
Are there any items that you, anybody would like removed from the consent agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and unanimous. And we have Councilor Gilman and Councilor Holmgren here to do a presentation on Student Government Day, which we should all participate in.
Thank you very much. I am very excited to be here. Councilor Gilman, who has done a lion's share of the work on this and myself, beginning last fall, have been meeting with Dr. Sapphire and members of the school administration along with high school history teacher Rich Francis to reinvigorate Student Government Day, which is a charter mandated day. And when I was a freshman in high school back in 1994 and 95, I was fortunate enough to participate in it. It was a little bit different then. We went to a city council meeting and did some mock votes, but what has been planned for the city in the next month is going to be pretty exciting. So, on Tuesday, May 28th, all day, starting at 8:00 a.m., a student will be assigned to various members of city administration and to city councillors. So far, Councilor Gilman, Councilor Lundberg, and myself, and hopefully others, will also be shadowed. And the mayor has really taken this on, and she's very excited about it as well. I'll read you a list of who's involved in a moment. And so, students through their history classes will sign up to shadow elected and municipal officials for 90 minutes to two-hour sessions. There will be a city hall welcome reception for all participants, including students and their parents, at 6:15 p.m. And at 7:00 p.m., at the start of the city council meeting, Council President Lundberg will ask student participants to leave the Pledge of Allegiance. Student Government Day will be first on the agenda after an introduction of the program by school administration. GHS Student Government Day participants will be asked to share with the council who they shadowed and what they learned. So, I do want to thank also Mr. Cook. Thank you very much for the work that you've done on this. So, so far, we've got Mayor Taken, Mr. Destino, the City Clerk's office, Kenny Costa, our city auditor, city councillors, school committee members, forgive me, thank you very much, you guys, Melissa Texera, Kathy Clancy, and Tony Gross, and we hope more of you will volunteer, League of Women Voters, the Harbor Master's Office, Chief Conley, Chief Smith, Karen Carroll, our public health director, our public health nurse, our community development director, and the director of the Sawyer Free Library are all the people so far. So this is pretty exciting. It's going to be, it's going to be pretty big, and we're hoping it'll continue after this year. And so, I'll hand it over to Val, just to let you guys know.
So I'm so excited, and it's great having Jen on this group because she experienced it when it was really live and well at Gloucester High, so we're excited about it. Tony!
Hey, oh, Tony did it too, that's awesome!
That's awesome!
She did it too? Oh my goodness! That was amazing! It's gorgeous!
I was a school committee member in 1969.
Cool! Nice!
So, actually...
I went to see Peters, though. They allowed us to.
Nice. So Chief Conley actually was president of this class when he did it, was part of this. So he was one of the first to RSVP. So I'm just so excited that so many members of our municipal departments have signed up. Some have signed up for two sessions. You know, so we're really excited, and we just so much thank Principal Cook for your leadership and Dr. Sapphire. So we are just really excited about this. So let's keep the momentum. I need to, I owe you, we owe you a signup sheet for the kids, what times, and we're really excited about it. And the only other thing that I wanted to mention is that we also brainstormed another idea, and that is, at some other point in the year, we're thinking of doing a mock city council meeting at Gloucester High, where we ask the students to come up with a controversial topic, possibly, and actually deliberate and have a discussion. And then members of the school committee and city council can partner with them to kind of aid assistance if they're having a little struggle with parliamentary procedure or need the gavel or something like that. But we just thought that that would be really cool, and to let the students come up with that idea, we thought was awesome. And I also want to mention Corey Cuckoo is going to be doing some live streaming that day, so we're going to ask every mentor and his student to do a selfie or picture and send it to Corey. And at the city council meeting, we'll do a little video show at the beginning to introduce each mentor and the person. And the League of Women Voters is helping us. They're going to set up a little booth at that little session before the city council meeting, and so parents and everything can show their kids how to register to vote, and they'll be there. They're also involved with this whole session. So we're just really excited. We appreciate you asking us to be here tonight, and we want to thank administration and Principal Cook and Rich Francis. This is going to be good. So let's pump it up and get tons of kids to do it, and we can teach them that maybe someday they might want to be a city councillor or a school committee member, or a mayor or a municipal department head. So anyway, do you have anything to add?
No, thank you very much.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. How many kids are participating?
Yeah, and I can actually add a little bit. I've not heard of it because some have talked. But I did talk to, so it depends on the total number of, you know, people who participate. Do you have an idea of where we were at for the total participants?
We, well, we have a lot that will double up.
Right.
So I think we could accommodate about, I think we could accommodate maybe 40.
Okay, so where we are already, so Mr. Francis has already been meeting with the students. We don't know the times yet, but we went ahead using your list and meeting with the students. And I think at last count, he had, I think he was in, it was somewhere around 20 students who are already, you know, at this stage, fully committed to the fold.
But many of them said two, like a Harbor Master said, "I'll take two," and you know, I mean, it's...
The other part was really cool, is several of the students were able to find something they were interested in, like city planning, for example. Or Harbor Master actually was in the media, the student who has an interest there. So we've been able to, you know, the history department's been able to match students with the things that they're interested in, you know. So it's, that's been a really exciting part of having such a diverse range of people involved in government, right? It's not just maybe what you usually think of in terms of government, but you know, it's a fairly diverse range of what kids' interests are and how to be involved civically in the broad way. I also wanted to add that our idea for the expanding this to this debate in the auditorium would be that we would be able to get younger students who, you know, are not yet participating at the level of partnering with somebody for the day, but we'll be able to get a larger group of students to be the audience for the deliberations, right? So students who are studying U.S. history currently would be the audience, and so they would have pre-activities in their U.S. history classes. They would go to the auditorium, and then they'd have a post-activity after it about what they saw. So it would couple, you know, the students who are actually doing the mock debate plus an audience of students and really expand the reach of Student Government Day and reach more kids, not just those that are very involved, you know, 20 to 40, but reach, you know, 200 kids, a larger group.
I think we also thought that we could have them vote on their computers.
Yes, that's right.
They were sitting in the audience, right? Which would be, which would be awesome, so, yeah.
But we're still working on that piece.
And we consider this to be a work in process, continuous improvement. So at the end of this, we'll say what went well and what do we need to improve, and just keep expanding on it, so, anyway.
Sorry, we didn't get to talk about that ahead of time.
It's okay.
I was doing a little research today to find out how many we had.
This is great, you saved us from having another meeting.
Sure, exactly.
Thank you.
As part of our annual duties is to listen to, we have approved the district improvement plan and now start a series of school improvement plans. And tonight, we have Veterans Principal Matt Fusco, Plum Co., Principal Tammy Morgan, West Penn Arsh Principal Tori Marmel, as well as the O'Malley Innovation Middle School Principal Lynn Dean. Elementary is going to roll altogether, is that...
Yes and no, because there is a strong section of the school improvement plan which is common to all five elementary schools, and then there's a portion which is unique to each school based upon their perceived needs. And so, to, I think, hit it off, we have Tammy Morgan, Plum Co.
I guess so, you do. Well, like Dr. Sapphire said, the five elementary principals always get together. We read the district improvement plan, we have a discussion with our assistant superintendent, and we come up with two common goals for the five elementary schools. And the first goal is an increase within MCAST and ELA in math, and we want to make sure that in the 2020, we show a student growth percentile that will fall between 45 and 60 in the median range in both ELA and math. I know the state, I think it's 40 to 60, but we want to make it 45 or higher. And the way we're going to do that is we will keep holding our ELA and math data meetings, which happen three times a year, in the fall, the winter, and the spring. After the data meetings, after we administer the assessments, we hold data meetings, we analyze the data, and then we make sure we have common core curriculum assessments as well, and then we are able to group our students into tiers of support, and then we progress monitor on our interventions and on our classroom teaching. So that goes along with that. We have a protocol called a closer look, that we take a look at the MCAST scores that we get in the fall, and throughout the year, the teachers will take a look at previous released MCAST questions and start integrating that into their curriculum, whether it's math or ELA or science. We also know that, because it's always on computers, that our children need good typing skills, because of that takes a long time for them to type in their answers. I'll have them write now, they're allowed scrap paper, so they will write down and take notes on scratch paper, and then they will wait until the end and go back and start typing in their answers. So right now, it takes a while for the children to do that. So we're hoping, to meet the state standards for keyboarding expectations, which is, you know, grade two, get familiar with the keyboard, you know, the correct hand position, and then grade three, you can see in four and five, having accuracy, you know, as they move along. And we do have a program that allows us to do that, and it's called All the Right Type. Most of our teachers are using the Google Classroom, definitely in grades three through five. They're using that to, you know, do their writing, to draft it, to edit it, you know, all the revisions, and to have their final copies. And we are coming, when we get together for the Common Scoring District-wide, they are actually receiving typed answers, we're seeing typed answers to the writing prompts. And so, we know what we're doing now is getting them more prepared as they move along. This way here, too, the teachers are able to give them immediate feedback with the Google Classroom. And they do have a way that they have the rubrics right in there, they can highlight and give them little notes and instant feedback, and so they can always improve. Remember when we were kids, we had to write it, we had to rewrite it, we erased, we crumbled up the paper, oh, this saves so much time.
What do you mean, moved a little? We don't do that now?
No, we don't. Shh, you're not supposed to tell them, you know? I wasn't there. And so, to do all the Common Scoring, we want to make sure that we're all using the rubrics that have been developed district-wide, that we are all rating and scoring the kids' rating all together, no matter where they are in the district, whatever school. And so, we use Common Planning Time, and we use after-school time, and we also use building-based professional development to do this. And we really want to concentrate now, in order to do that, is to track the achievement of our lowest 20% of students, both in literacy and math, and really, really pinpoint those modifications that we need to do to, you know, change instruction in the classroom. And of course, attendance plays a big part in making sure that our scores go up. And so, we are, the principals are monitoring the attendance. We do have a program that's set up to send out letter, phone letters, every five, 10, or 15 days, based on our school committee policy for attendance and tardiness. We've held, I know many of us have done that, instead of the five, or 10, or 15, we have sent out letters on day six, seven, eight. We've had many phone calls with parents, we've had many meetings with parents, and we are so happy that we do have an attendance officer going to be joining us in May. So we are very happy with that. So, all this takes is a lot of planning, and it really needs, you know, a professional development to analyze the MCAST and a lot of action planning for our individual schools of where we have our weaknesses and where we have our strengths and how we can build on those. And we're hoping to, you know, to see an increase in the student growth percentile. You want to add anything? You want me to do the second?
So our second goal is focused on writing. Over the last several years, we've been working on our district writing curriculum, programs we use, balancing of teaching students to want to write and love process writing, but also to balance the demands of being writers that can show what they've comprehended in text through writing. So we call that response to text writing, which is much more directed and specific. So we're trying to find, that's a lot of writing that our students have to do, and so balancing both process writing and expository writing is something that we've been working on as a district. And so our goal is continued emphasis on writing through collaborative scoring and data analysis. There will be a 2% increase for all students in written responses on MCAST. So, one of the things that we've been doing in addition to the closer look protocol, where we really delve into the generic MCAST responses, we can look at individual student responses and then the state rubric and see how they scored and how that can help us with our instruction the following year. And so, we've been implementing Empowering Writers, the written response to text, and continued the implementation of the Essential Guide, which is helping us balance those two pieces. And written expression or framing your thoughts for kindergarten through second grade really teaches how you form a good paragraph. And first and second grade, we really need our students to be able to build a core paragraph of five to seven sentences. Here's the topic sentence, here's the details, here's my conclusion, so that then they can go forward and write longer essays or research projects, et cetera. We've been doing that through Common Scoring, at least twice, if not three times a year, per grade, utilizing the rubrics that we've been, teachers have been developing and crafting and revising based on our experience with Common Scoring, and really using that feedback to help us know what this student needs and next steps next time they go back to the next writing project. So really helping students move along that continuum of improving their writing. And then, you know, it just takes a lot of time, and it's a cycle that continues over and over, and we've expanded to grades K and 1 with that, looking at student work, so it's been really great.
Next goal, bless you.
I'm allergic to Sapphire.
Okay, this next goal is, the three of us are going to go through, the third goal for all of ours is specific to just our schools. So, at the Veteran's School, we're going to be learning more about cultural proficiency. Cultural proficiency, what does it mean to be culturally proficient? It's the ability to work together with people from different groups and from different cultures that come to our school. So, this is something that they've been working on at the ECLC, which is the Essex County Leadership Committee. It's a burgeoning idea that's coming out in education a lot right now. And then when you look at Veteran's School and the changes that we've gone through in the last, at least the six years that I've been here, I think there were seven ELL, English Language Learner students when I started six years ago. We are currently at 53 English Language Learner students. English Language Learner students. And we want to make, while we think that the Veteran's School is a wonderful, welcoming place, there's things about people's cultures that maybe we just don't understand or something like that. So we really want to take a nice, take some time and really delve into learning more about what a culturally proficient school looks like, and really start taught, and we're going to find a book to read, we haven't decided what that book is going to be. And we're going to be following closely what the ECLC, the Essex County Leadership Committee is doing with it as well. We're going to try and work hand in hand with them. So it's really just to try and build a school that's welcoming to everyone, not just what we see, but just how we set up the whole building. So it's going to be some really exciting work, and the students keep coming, and we love the English Language Learners, I think they're the bravest children ever. If you took me and put me somewhere and I didn't speak any other language, but they're learning, and they're fluent in English by the time they leave, and they're amazing kids. So, thank you.
Okay, for Plum Cove, our goal three, we are going to expand our social-emotional learning support system to the tier two and tier three to decrease our chronic absenteeism as well as our behavioral referrals. And I'm looking to measure that by an assessment called DESA by two percent. And what DESA is, it's an assessment that will help us identify the students who are lacking certain social-emotional skills. We're still going to be true to the Second Steps and true to the PBIS. We have melded that together so we can have a common language, but we are now in our fourth year of PBIS, and as we're looking at our behavioral data, we're finding out that we need something else to drill down deeper into the social needs of our students. So we've gone through, watched a lot of webinars on social-emotional, and all of them keeps referring to this Deveraux Student Strength Assessment, and it's easy to give, you can take like forty, forty-five minutes of the classroom for a mini-assessment, and it will give us the data on kids that are highlighted at risk. And then from there, our adjustment counselor or school psychologist can take the children and give them a fuller assessment. And the program offers us strategies to implement in the classroom with classroom teachers and our staff as our teaching assistants, our new supervisors, all of the staff. So that's what we're looking into, redoing our action plan for year four PBIS. We have found some great things along with Second Steps and Class Dojo and literature that really brings the core of Second Steps more alive to students and more interested. We just need to know where our students' skills are lacking, if it's self-awareness, if it's self-management, is it relationship skills? And this kind of assessment would help us. And I think after looking at where EC, ECLC's going, I think that's a goal that we, as the district, will be heading towards. So I'm in conversations now, hoping that I might be able to get this as a pilot for our school. If not, I will try to write a grant and get it through. You know, the cost is about fifteen hundred dollars for the full, for the full assessment. And so that's what we're going to be working on. And we will also assess them three times a year, progress monitoring, and we could have, when we have our meetings with our behavioral stations, we can talk about certain kids and really help classroom teachers and all staff members know how to teach certain strategies through the curriculum. So that's what we're looking forward to doing.
The proposed state budget that's now in process does, has created a separate line item for schools for social-emotional and mental health support for schools. I think it's somewhere near one point six million dollars.
Yeah.
So we'll keep a close and watchful eye to see how that plays out, how it's, how you can gain access and all that stuff. So we'll keep a close eye on that once the budget's passed.
We're also meeting Friday with superintendent and principal from Omeleye and from the high school with secretary, et cetera, about children's mental health. We had a conference call with her two months ago, and we also had everyone from behavioral health. And so now she's going to be coming Friday, we're going to have her, the cabinet, the governor's cabinet's coming, so since she's coming down, we're going to have her ear and we're looking into that. There's also courses, if anyone wants to, Addison Gilbert Hospital and Leahy are offering CPR mental health. I'm taking that myself, because you just don't know. And we all agree that our teachers are not social workers, we need more in our schools. You're there to teach and, you know, and it's not what's happening in our schools, it's the follow-up that we're concerned about. It's when we have a child that, you know, needs some help and they go home, they go to the emergency room, they come back, we don't know what's happening. We don't know if everything's better, we don't know about the follow-up, and that's our main concern. It's because you're thinking, okay, well, the school took it, they went to the hospital, they did what they did, they're back in school, that must be they're okay. Doesn't mean that. And so I really, we are really working on that, I sympathize with the schools.
That's great, thank you for that information. Thank you.
So West Parish's third goal is school climate and culture also, and it states, "The West Parish community will provide a safe and supportive learning environment through development of routines and rituals for students and adults that foster respect and responsibility through social-emotional instruction and results in academic and social success, as measured by a five percent decrease in referrals for social-emotional." And this is the first year I've been able to put a number on that, because we haven't had the tools to do it. So the first goal you'll see is plan for and implement PBIS in the common areas of the school. The last several years, the last two years specifically, we've had professional learning communities that have been focusing on PBIS, a homegrown, how do we have routines for the hall, developing routines for the hallway and the cafeteria. When East Gloucester and Plum Cove started their work with the May Center a few years ago, we were moving into a new school. At the time, it just wasn't right for us to partner with a center like the May Center, where we can do something more systematically and explicitly. At this time, we are ready for that, we are working on it, so to have someone kind of help and guide us and teach us tools like the Swiss database, which would allow us to record social-emotional issues, behavioral issues, allows us to kind of track over time, are we seeing a decrease in referrals to the office? So this is something that we're going to be able to start in the nineteen-twenty school year. And we have had a first overview meeting with a small team. We're hoping to have the May Center come back to a staff meeting this year, do a full overview for all the teaching staff, and then work on creating our PBIS leadership team and put together lesson plans and training and get the database in place so that we can feel like we have that map to get us to where we need to go with PBIS. In addition, we provide instruction that supports social and emotional development. Our teachers continue to use Second Step. Our adjustment counselor, over the last several years, has been teaching the student safety unit from Second Steps. We started many years ago with just kindergarten, and then we added first grade the next year, so it was two different grades. And this year, our third graders have now had four years of the student safety unit as taught by the school adjustment counselor, and that's been really great. And so we will keep expanding that until all sixth grades get the student safety unit from her. And in addition to that, she has focused the last two years on resiliency, teaching students that stress, some stress is good, and how do you deal with anxiety and how do you push through something that's hard? And letting kids really feel that struggle through character education lessons. So that work is important in this day and age for our kids. And then we'll continue to develop vertically aligned instruction and school climate collaboration. We taught, I talked previously about goal two, about writing, that's been very grade level specific for us as a school right now, and we're going to start talking vertically about how does writing grow within West Parish, so that we ensure students have common language throughout. So we're going to continue that work and building these means. That's just one of the things. And that's the end for us. If you have any questions for any of the three of us, we'd be happy to answer them.
I think any one of you can answer this question. It goes to the first two goals. When I first, when you first started off tonight, all I could think of is here we are, we have goals teaching to the test, you know, and they just seem so structured and make it, so I was very happy to hear the third goal from each one of you. But my question is, for the first two goals, what was done to get teacher buy-in to these goals? Because they sound almost like professional growth goals too, that might be in their evaluation. So I don't know if you could kill two by one stone by having that happen, but what is the teacher buy-in to get into these percentages and doing all of this work?
So for us specifically this year, September, the very first September early release day at the elementary is focused on MCAST in some way or other. And my third, fourth, and fifth grade teachers said, can we just delve deeply into writing, please? And so I built the agenda that said, here's, here's what we want to look at, here's the process we're going to go through, does this work? They said yes. I had summer leadership meetings where we talked about those things. Third, fourth, and fifth graders, anyone who is an MCAST teacher takes it very seriously, and they want it to be immediate. They don't want to just do something because it needs to be done, but they want to know, how can I look at this in a way that it impacts my practice in a positive or productive way? So that's always the goal, it's not just to say that we've done this, it's to say, how can I impact practice or help our school grow in a positive way?
And also, the teachers have been involved since the initial step in different committees in making the pacing guides and the standardized report cards, they've been in one of the good writing prompts. So in all the steps that we're doing here, we have gotten full input from all the teachers' grade level throughout the five different schools. So that's really important for them to say, yes. You know, like Tawina said, three, four, and five, take it very personally, the MCAST, but also K through five is responsible for that child, all our students. And so throughout the year, when they were, throughout the years, when they're picking the math program or the writing program or the reading program, they have been involved in all the steps. So I think that makes it a lot easier for us to take a look at the data.
Yeah, I mean, you know, same, same what they said, but just like, you know, growth is always something we have in our minds, and we've been excited at the Veteran's School to see our growth scores start to rise up to get to the median level. So there's plenty of buy-in for that, for sure.
And I just want to say too, I'm a huge fan of Class Dojo. I love during the day getting all those notices and seeing the teachers perform, some bloody great work going on in those classrooms. I'm sorry, Tammy, I have two more questions. You had talked about attendance.
Yes.
I'm curious to know, when you called the parents when they were six or seven attendances out of school, what kind of feedback were you getting when you brought up the issue of students being out those many days?
We usually call, after the tech day, we usually call for a conference, we set up a scheduled time, usually the attendance supervisor, officer attends the meeting, we sit down, we discuss what has been happening, is it vacations, is the avoidance of school, is the anxiety, any number of the reasons, and then we sit down and we come up with an action plan for them to work.
But what kind of feedback are you getting from the parents? Are they disappointed in the attendance policy? And I'm doing this up because I'm hearing some chatter, and I'm just curious what kind of chatter you're getting.
Well, a lot of them, they abuse the days, absent days. I have to be honest. So I mean, most of the people, the state counts on ten percent, which is eighteen days because a hundred and eighty day, and a lot of the ones that are coming chronic from my school are due to vacation times, or due to, you know, it's a nice day out, we're going to go to the beach, or we're leaving every Friday to our cabin for skiing or whatever. So yeah, it's very hot.
You feel like you're talking to the wall or are you making?
Sometimes, sometimes we're talking to the wall and sometimes just sitting down and telling them how it affects their child, then makes them realize, oh, I didn't realize that. So we take a look at their child, we take a look at how it affects the other children in the classroom.
Right.
And our school, and then our district. And daily, I mean, monthly, I've been sending out little reminders in the newsletter, you know, even tardiness has a real impact on student learning. So, yes, it is with resistance, but you know.
A few habits.
Yeah, well, we have to do that. We're in this business for the kids.
Excellent, thank you.
Just to follow up on the tardy issue. That's a meeting, when they get to ten, we try to have the meetings on the tardies, because often the tardies are directly related to anxiety or struggling at home in the morning. And we talk about, when kids aren't here to start that routine with their peers, they are even more hesitant to go into the room, and it puts them off even further. So we talk about, you know, our bell goes off at eight forty-eight and the kids are walking in at eight fifty, please have them walk in with their peers, it makes them feel better. If they're running to the class at nine o'clock, they already feel behind the eight ball. So the more we can get kids to be able to follow the routine, the more comfortable they feel in their school day.
I have one more question if you don't mind me asking. The social-emotional piece, and I know this pertains to all of the schools, as we delve into the issues and talk about behaviors and the social-emotional, we have the child at school and we're able to work with the child, what is the outreach to be to get the parents involved? Because we all know, children are coming to school a lot of times as a result of what's going on at home, so what's going to happen when you have all this coming forward now because we are responsible for providing those services? What is the prep for the parents getting involved in the conversation? Because we know.
We have a lot of, we have a behavioral classroom at my school, therapeutic learning center for students with behavioral issues, so any student that goes into that program, their parents have a very, there's a high responsibility for the parents to be involved in that. We work with parents very closely, we've found, I've found parents most of the time need, need the help, want the help, and we approach it like that, that we're here to help, we're here to work together as a team. What I stress with parents all the time is that when parents work together with the school as a team, that's when we see the best outcomes for kids, bar none. So that seems to ring true for them, but, you know, it's constant, you know, you have to keep in touch.
And our school adjustment counselors and our school psychologists have real connections with the community partners, and they reach out and get them, if they need counseling help or family counseling or just the child, they do reach out to them, and it does make a relationship, a very strong relationship between the school and home.
It's a real team response, well, for veterans, I can speak to veterans, but it's a real team response from everybody, teacher, school adjustment counselor, myself, you know, everyone sort of tries to work that.
I guess I'm worried with one adjustment counselor at school, what's going to happen? I think I'm just foreseeing.
I mean, there's always a need, but I was just going to piggyback on there. The last three years specifically with the use of Class Dojo and Bloom's, teachers meet with parents all the time, but they're also catching those small behaviors earlier because it's easy to use the app to just say, today wasn't a great day, this is what happened. I'm copied on a couple of emails that go home every night from the teacher to the parent, just saying whether it was a good day or not. So communication tools have changed significantly because of technology in a positive way. And parents who do partner with us, their child just really benefits. So the teachers have been really working hard to adapt to the social-emotional needs that the kids in front of us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Yeah.
Nice to be here. So I'm not sure how much of a look we've taken at our plan, I did change the format up from, from the way it was last year, you'll see it looks slightly different than the elementary.
Instructional opportunities, it might be also some opportunity for teachers and kids to say, "Okay, what do I need to work on right now? Let's use that for this." That might inform an evaluation and a full revision of the schedule for the future. And that's the second part of that, that action step, which is as a faculty, we need to take a look at what our real objectives would be about a schedule. My experience shows me that you never find a schedule that everyone's happy with. So we really want to know what we're embarking on if we decide to take that on. But to, you know, to lay that out and maybe form a subcommittee if needed and look at what are our needs? What do we think we can meet? And how would we go about implementing something like that? So that's sort of the big process, but getting that together, yeah.
From your experience, is our eighty-minute blocks common at middle school?
Not really. Usually it's more sixty or somewhere between forty, five, and sixty. They work really nicely for some of the subject areas that have those eighty-minute blocks. We also have a very nice pure on-team, off-team structure that's invaluable at middle school. So you have your cohort of kids. We have some things that get in the way of using that, maximizing how well that can function. So that's, those are the balances we'll have to look at is if we, if we want to be able to be more flexible to carve out time for kids to do what they need in the moment, does that mean we lose the clean on-team, off-team in order to find that time? So it's quite an investigation that you have to go through and exploration time.
Can you describe on-team, off-team?
Sure. Typically at middle school, if it's a team structure, there are the academic courses and the specialist classes. Sometimes people call them integrated arts, et cetera. We have the four academic classes that are on-team. Some places also have a world language for all kids, and then that ends up on-team as well. We don't, we have the four cores, and then we have the specialist. So when they're, this year, when they're on-team, they've got the same group of eighty-five kids or so that they see in all their academic classes. When they go in seventh and eighth grade this year, when they go to specialist classes, the house is all mixed. That's not been the case in the past, and it was, it's not the case for sixth grade. But some of the, they do have that opportunity to see other faces, so they're not with those same kids all day. The second goal, it relates to professional practice, professional learning. There's a lot here. We're involved in a number of initiatives. Matt mentioned the Essex County Learning Community work. We also need to some more growth on our data collection, collaboration, and using inquiry models. The data teams that are math and English are moving along. But again, we want to move off of just looking at those big assessments and really having a more internalized approach to when we've got assessment data, whether it's very informal or whether it's a big, full-blown formal assessment, what are we doing with that? How do we look at that just through the lens of what our kids need? How do we group kids? How do we go lessons? How do we instruct? So that is, the inquiry is part of that. And the basic goal is for every time we look at data, it's not just about what group is acceded and how are they performing, but it's then what are we going to do about it? Do we need to extend them for enrichment above and beyond? Do we need to provide intervention to try to get them as close to grade-level proficiency as we can? The other thing people have been working on that needs continuation is differentiated instruction. For someone who considers myself to be initial adverse, I noticed how many times I used abbreviation. So let me go through a little legend on this. So UDL is Universal Design for Learning, which is a flexible approach that, for all kids, that allows entry into curriculum different ways, processing of the curriculum in different ways, and presentation of their learning in different ways, just as a short overview on it. So it's a differentiated model. We also can differentiate by readiness and interest and learning style. And teachers have been playing with, not playing with, but working on a variety of different ways to try to approach this. So again, data helps you decide where your kid needs to be or where they want to be, and then you take that to the level to plan the structure around that. The partnership that we have with Essex County Learning Community, we've been very fortunate to have a lot of that focus on the middle school. So we have two different committees working currently, just really getting off the ground. One is for multi-tiered systems of support, which are interventions at different levels for both academic and social-emotional. And then the second is for project-based learning. So the project-based learning, we'll go back to the innovation plan, look at the roots of it, see what we've already got in place, and grow forward, taking a look at what we need to really integrate that further. And the multi-tiered system of supports next year will be focused on really looking and fleshing out what we do for all kids. So before we move to that tier-two intervention or tier-three into special education, have we really maximized what we can provide for kids at the entry level? So the project-based learning plays a part of that. Being able to differentiate well and give the kids access and choice, it plays a part of that. So it all sort of fits together that way. The third goal is focused on social-emotional learning in the community. We are continuing with sales. That's been, remains a high priority for the faculty. There's ownership around that. The kids really benefit from it. We do need to do some more work expanding on our bully prevention and intervention program. I will say we've had very few cases of actual bullying this year, but we do have a lot of hurtful behavior that everyone calls bullying. So there's that education piece among the kids, among the faculty, among the parents, that we need to do a better job with. And then we need to help kids build the skills to be able to understand what's going on, how to get out of it, that resiliency around middle school as a time when we aren't always kind to each other. How do we handle that better? How are we able to resolve our differences, et cetera? So currently, our bullying prevention is run by our guidance counselors. They go into classes once a term, and they, you know, do much, many fewer lessons than I think we could use. So some of the work, hopefully, will be done with some curriculum development this summer and be able to expand that further. We started a safe and supportive schools program this year with our staff building expertise for all of the various different ways to approach trauma-sensitive practices, restorative justice. Our vaping program is a good example of that. The divergent program is, you know, rather than focus on consequence, help kids understand how to make different choices and better choices around that. So those things will continue. Finally, our community and school culture. We'll have a new assistant principal, so integrating a new person into our team when I've only been here a year really allows us to take a look at the ways we approach supporting the faculty and helping to support our students. And then the second part of that is the, is what we do at our faculty meetings. So to engage the new administrative team, supporting the teachers to be learners together. My intent is to use that faculty meeting that's really valuable. There are very few times when we have the whole staff together to have, to do face-to-face work. So they'll be focused on, you know, whichever topics they feel will best help them forming teams to work together to do research, study, implement, practice, showcases of what they have going on in their classrooms, et cetera.
Questions?
Question. Through your presentations tonight and the earlier presentations, we're hearing about getting kids caught up and improving their practices and things like that. What in your plan, if anything, what is the school doing to address, to address high-achieving students? In other words, we know we need to bring up, but there's always this group of students that's high-achieving, and the parents want to know, you know, what are these schools doing for my kids?
Sure. I think that the place for that is within really building our expertise with using data and differentiating. So when you're thinking about differentiating, what's always on the forefront is those kids who aren't cutting it yet. But the other piece of that is you've got kids in front of you who are not going to be engaged because whatever's been planned, they've been there, done that, they don't, they don't need it, they can breeze through it, et cetera. So you're really looking at a very, very expanded continuum on that. So to do those things within the regular classroom through stations or a variety of varied tasks or, you know, different levels.
Is that something you think you could report out at a latest committee meeting?
In terms of?
What that, what we're doing for the high achievers. You know, like I said, we're always focused on getting the help, supporting the students, but yet we don't usually hear about the students that want to...
Yeah, and sometimes it's more subtle, so you give kids leadership, you know, opportunities and things like that, but...
But it goes incredibly, the school has an amazing reputation now, and we want to be able to say to the public and show the public, you know, we address all the needs. So math is, in math test levels, which helps in that area, at least math, the advanced math and the...
Yeah, there is, yeah. There are also a lot of other opportunities that kids have to take that extra step. It's not necessarily separately articulated, but there's certain ways for us to take a look at and do some sharing around the ways that we let kids rise above.
I have a question. In terms of your first call, which talked about student engagement and kind of keeping them interested, how are the specialist lines, arts and music, being evaluated and incorporated? I know, you know, many kids find those classes extremely interesting. Are we keeping an eye on the curriculum? And how does that fit into, you know, we do all English, math, science, history. And very, and I know, you know, the teachers are doing what they're doing in the specialist class, but we never really hear about what their aspirations are or what the plan is to help keeping those improving.
You know, it's funny that you say that one of the reasons that I, that our former plan had a math section and English section, a science section, and then the school culture piece. And when I had the faculty get together and talk about, you know, where they fit in and what they had done this year, there were, there was a lot of information below the grid because they didn't have a place to put themselves in the subject. But things like, you know, the art teachers working with the language arts teachers to create projects and to go out into the community, both for social-emotional contribution and to, and to the language arts standards contribution. Performing arts teacher, building and implementing a curriculum with one of the social workers around development of social-emotional skills, thinking about heart and head and how your stress level goes and things like that. And also performing, which again is the language arts standards. So what, what I'm hoping with this is that the specialist teachers are able to better find a place for themselves. And then they're part of all of these accomplishments. They, they're very excited about, you know, being, differentiating as others do, bringing what they do into the other subject areas and being able to share out ways to support those classes, even with regard to, you know, how we help kids develop executive function skills. All of those classes have a part in these kinds of things, so, so that will allow them to contribute.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. So we, to be in motion to accept the school improvement plans.
So what's that answer?
Is there any discussion?
This is all right.
Yeah. Unless somebody wants to...
No, I just sit here.
Put one of them on.
At what point do we do the follow-up to see? Do they come in to present where they're at from these? Reset these goals and then wait for the nation to set new goals? Is it simple, we go over?
Do we, do we?
Someone?
Yeah, I guess you. We haven't brought it before the school committee, maybe a report, we do it for the, for the district improvement plan, but we don't do it for the school improvement.
I'm a significant, maybe we do it, but I'm not thinking about it. If we sell like a report, even if it's from administration that said, "Okay, we've been following up on these goals." Because these goals all sound, you know, worthy, but it's assuming like, who ones work out, which ones need more work.
It certainly range for a mid-year.
It's written on the calendar.
Oh, the master agenda?
Okay, well, thank you very much. Is there any further discussion? And we'll take a vote. All in favor of approving of the four school improvement plans as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, it's unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now to serious business of attendance report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, as always. Item number one, and actually I have two, both have been referred to earlier in this meeting. The first has to do with the visit this coming Friday at eight o'clock at Gloucester High School by Secretary of Education Peiser and Secretary of Labor and Workforce Development Constance. Apparently, the state government is here in Gloucester on Friday to conduct the governor's managers' meeting. I believe that runs from ten to eleven-thirty. I received a call from the communications director for Secretary Peiser asking if they could visit some aspect of the school, of the schools, the district, and they, as I, it's brief, it'll be eight to nine o'clock. But they are, she asked if we had received a capital skills grant at all in the past, and we had the sum of five hundred thousand dollars for the advanced manufacturing. So that will clearly be on the agenda, and Secretary Constance in particular.
So we'll ask for another five hundred thousand more.
Yes, we will. We'll also take them over to see biotechnology and the robotics class. We probably only have time for three. I sent out an invitation, we confirmed it yesterday, and it'd be great to have whoever can make it to come out. We'll be an entourage.
And the school with eight?
Eight o'clock, yeah. Item number two, the mayor had spoken about. We have that same day a meeting on mental health services on North Shore with human service, Health and Human Service Secretary Mary Lou Sutters. We had that meeting a couple of months ago. The extent of therapeutic services, the amount of beds for children in crisis is in and of itself problematic, if not a crisis as well. And during that meeting a couple of months ago, along with our deliberations, there was also a conference call to the secretary. She in turn has said that she is more than willing to come out. That meeting is set for twelve-thirty on Friday. Some of the issues that were raised at the first meeting include funding from the, from the state, the extent of funding that provides services, beds, et cetera. Reimbursement for hospitalization for children, this is from Senator Talk, very frankly, stating that it's not adequate. Licensed clinicians are hard to find, the schools themselves are underfunded. Very slow response to student needs, of the pace of the treatment is just too slow for anything but containment. The need for outpatient services, in-home therapy, early identification, and early referral prior to, you know, the crisis when a child's in crisis. And there is, as mentioned, the need for pediatric psychiatric and pediatric behavioral beds on North Shore as well. So it's a really good thing that these meetings are taking place, but I don't think the answer is immediately around the corner.
Well, then she did say there was twenty beds opening up at Salem, and we said that's not enough. We have Anna Jakes that now that Addison Gibley, a virgin with Beth Israel, that we need to get some more beds there. I mean, we were talking in conference call, and I said to her, I know her very well, I said, "This isn't enough. We're not, we're not happy, I'm not having my teachers become psychologists, it's the aftercare." And I think she understood we were talking about low income and Medicaid, and there was a parent there that says, "I'm sorry, but I earn six figures. I have Blue Cross National Gold, the best that there is, and my child, I went through seven therapists." It's not the school that's failing, it's we are failing. Because he had to stay thirteen days in an emergency room. So I think, and she said, "I better get down there, yeah, you better come down because it's happening." We, the texts that I get from parents, I mean, we have a good relationship with Dr. Sapphire. I get all these calls, these emails, I let him know that we have patients there and what's happening and what's, why they're going to be, not be coming into the schools and why they're, you know, having problems. And then right away, finally, one of the parents says, I says, "Can I use your name? And can I actually send yours because I sent it right to the governor's office? This is ridiculous, this, we can't keep doing this." And when you have a child that is in high need, and then your emergency room is going, you know, doing what it's saying, you have screaming here and shouting here, a person who's on the verge that doesn't want to live, it's, it's a priority, it really is. And like we said, we're not equipped for it, and we need to, and I'm not going to wait, and we're not going to wait. I mean, I have to say, Dr. Sapphire, Principal Cook, and the other principal formerly, I keep forgetting her name, I apologize, was spot on, and we had everyone there, and so this meeting is very crucial. I demanded everyone again from behavioral health coming, my staff, I demanded, you know, police and fire because they deal with it all. We all do, and I'm more than welcome to come to say, "Look, you know what? It's not, not low income, it's everyone." And, you know, mental health doesn't pick and choose, you know, what criteria you are. So, and Jonathan Lodgeett's office, the DA's office, he sent someone down. I'm working closely with their office too because it's, what he said is, "You don't understand. There's so many that, what happens is they fall through the crack, they end up in juvenile. And what happens, they age out, and then they become into the regular jail system. So now you want to know why these children are crying for help, we're not doing anything, they end up on drugs, and then we have an opioid issue, or, you know, we have to protect our children another way because what happens in all the other, you know, the other communities. Thank God we've had none here, but unfortunately, you know what? We have to, we have to do something now." That's usually not a role of the citizens or us outs of school, but unfortunately now that's our role. We're more than welcome all to come.
Thank you. Item number three, school choice reporting requirements. If we are to remain an incoming school choice district, technically, we are supposed to have the school committee vote to approve that. The deadline for that is June the first. So we can certainly put that on the agenda as an action item for the next school committee meeting, if you like. If districts don't officially approve, that that means that they are open for school choice. But it would be nice at some point for the school committee, as always, to vote in favor of incoming school choice. And the only other issue there is that Desi is implementing a new electronic system. I haven't taken a look at it yet, but I'm sure they'll get the message once you guys take the vote. The next two items are some grants that we're receiving. The first one is the Twenty First Century Learning Center CCLC Summer Enhancement Grant, code six forty-four. Long story short, the after-school program, which if you recall is funded as an exemplary model program, we spoke about that a year or so ago, has asked for and received a grant for sixteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. The maximum amount that they could have applied for was twenty thousand. So the purpose of the grant is to address summer learning loss, to create, and we heard about project-based learning, to create engaged academic learning and enrichment activities for students, to support a successful transition from the elementaries into the, into the middle school, and to provide innovative and shared professional development opportunities for teachers, administrators, and community-based partners as well. So this is another opportunity to provide services after-school for children that are in the number somewhere around two-hundred-and-fifty, perhaps even more, out of the six-hundred-and-forty-one students are directly involved in our after-school program, and we've received more funding to support that program. And the first item, and I believe the last item, is a comprehensive school health services grant. We've spoken about it before. This is the grant that will provide the basis for an in-house school suspension program with wraparound social and mental health services that are provided by the school as well. The grant is for ninety-five thousand dollars a year for four years, with an option, three options to reapply for two years, so for another six years. So this grant could run for about ten years, then add to ninety-five thousand. So we do expect the bulk of that to be for an in-house, in-school suspension coordinator. The, the grant itself, the high school, and supporting services, and put together a plan whereby the in-house suspensions would be four days a week. On Friday, there would be specific counseling services in addition to what's done over the course of Monday through Thursday. So...
And don't forget, that was also initiated, it's not a punishment, it's actually parents saying, you know, "If you've suspended my child because he had a breakdown or an issue at school, by taking him out of the school and bringing him home or having him home, it's making it worse." You're taking him out of a environment he felt safe, but doesn't know how to comprehend, or someone might do something. By keeping them in the school, it's setting, like a model saying, "Okay, you did wrong, but we're going to help you, and you're going to get services, at least we know we're going to get services." So the parents were asking for this program too, and so when the Board of Health and Dr. Sapphire work together, I feel it's a great program also. I mean, I applaud them for trying and going for this grant because we're ahead of the ballgame when it comes to other schools in doing this. This is amazing program. It's going to be really well for our school.
Great. Yes, ma'am.
Does that mean there will be no out-of-school suspension except for probably safety?
I would say that is probably correct, unless the system somehow overloaded. But the intent is in fact to convert our suspension process to an in-house suspension with, you know, some, some social services.
Vaping services? Vaping services?
I can't.
Vaping?
I'll, I'll ask, I can't imagine not. The, the work at the middle school and the high school, particularly, I'll be right with you, sir. The, the stuff at the middle school particularly has been extensive. You saw the presentation by Mr. Testino and Mr. Epple a few sessions back as well, and they are now communicating extensively with the high school as well, and Officer Scholes has been very active. So I would say yes, without having directly asked them, I'd say a question.
So I'm curious how this works in school versus out of school. So when I was in school, we had in-school suspension, it was for lesser, the judge would be, "Oh, you threw a chair, you got in-school suspension, if you hit somebody, you would have got to go home," you know? Because in-school was actually the less desirable at the time. And so it sounds now this is more geared toward some rehabilitation-type work with these students who are struggling to, you know, staying controls there in the presence. And so I'm looking for confirmation that aside from safety, this is not going to be a lower tier of punishment. And if you go do something more egregious, you miss this program's opportunities, and you have to be...
Except for the, the safety issues, and we heard it in, what we were listening to with the school improvement plan as well, is that there are obviously underlying issues involved in the types of behavior that manifests itself as negative. And as such, since we understand that to be the case, and maybe that's too obvious, then it becomes part of this kind of program to address what's going on underneath. And in the case of students that are getting suspended, each and every one of them has issues that have to be addressed and attended to.
Right. So it's all in a spectrum of like detention in school, out of school, it'll be like...
Well, you know, it hasn't been completely fleshed out, or I haven't seen it, but again, I would think that there may be some circumstances where it is in the best interest, you have to weigh and measure, you know, what's beneficial for an individual and what's necessary for the larger group. And in those instances, I say that there may be decisions that call for an out-of-school suspension.
Hasn't there been some legislative changes about suspensions that now?
Well, it's been about at least three years where it has...
Right, but since we were in school.
Yes.
It is a big change, and this is a much more beneficial way to offer, because we have to offer services, educational opportunities...
We have to provide educational services.
To all suspended students, and this is definitely by far the most effective, and thank God.
We hope, yeah, we hope so.
Seems that, I mean, it, on paper, looks like it's much better than contracting with an online service or something that would have to then continue their education if they were at home.
And I would imagine that if there's distribution of drugs in school, that may require out, you know, out-of-school suspension.
Force them to come in Friday, force them to come back in on Friday for the services.
Well, it's still, there's still an issue there if you do that, right? But we'll see. Item number, last item, I, there was one more, that's when we were talking about the budget. We spoke about the possibility of having interns from AmeriCorps fill positions that would help us with our English language learners. And we received, Mr. Bach received notice last week or the week before, I'm not quite sure, saying that they are anxious to be involved in the Gloucester Public School system. They in fact have indicated that they might be able to provide between three and five interns here in Gloucester. We had already targeted the EL on the veterans and at Old Bailey, and we want to take a look at the high school as well because they're looking to have a coordinator. Somebody who's already working in the building would be the coordinator, and then halftime, the EL intern could then fill that position as well. The cost for each of the interns is eight thousand dollars at least, so it seems like it's going to be a good deal. And more on that when we get the details. it's going to be a good deal, and more on that when we get the details.
And, oh, I just have a quick question. Is that only for one year at a time?
It's one year, but it's the expectation that it would be an ongoing partnership with United Way.
Eight thousand dollars, how many hours a day do we get them?
All day.
The whole day?
Well, one's all day.
Full year for eight thousand dollars?
That's great.
And they receive, I believe, six weeks of training prior to coming to us, and a supervisor, an AmeriCorps supervisor is the person who will also be coming on site and working with them.
Any further questions on the superintendent?
What should I open this up with, second?
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's minutes. Move on to committee reports. We just have the one from Building and Finances.
So we had Building Finance Subcommittee meeting yesterday. We, the district, why we looked at our district's white finances, they are, were doing fine as far as there's no red flags, we're, we're, we're good. I don't want to get, you know, get into a lot of detail, but just the short version is that we're not going to, we're not in any financial danger in FY nineteen. We discussed the DBW's open tickets and closed tickets, that system still seems to be working well. Trying to find the, yeah. We had, so here's some of the summer projects. We're going to, asbestos removal at Plum Cove, the new chiller in O'Malley for the air conditioning system is set to go in in May, start up in May. That, they, DBW put out a request, I think it's got sent to all principals on what summer projects they would like to have done. The fieldhouse floor, new bleachers, that has gone through the city affirmatively, but...
Halfway.
But it...
Still needs to go to full council.
Did you go, did you go the other night?
No, it was, it was on time. It was off. It was, that was my fault, I thought it was going to be on Tuesday night, and it wasn't.
So it wasn't on the agenda?
No. My fault, I thought it was going to be.
Okay. So, anyway, that's, I don't see any, any roadblocks in that, so that's going to go out to bid, but probably if you want to be realistic, it will not make it for the summer. But that's not to say there isn't a chance, they'll try, they'll try, but I don't, you know, I don't want to set up any false expectations. The library is going to get them carpeting, they're going to do it in the form of tiles because that way they don't have to move the stacks.
Carpet squares.
Carpet squares, yes. Did I say tiles? Yes, sorry. And that was, that was it from DBW. We, food service, we talked about food service, it's, right now, we have a, at this particular point, there's a fourteen-thousand-dollar deficit, but that's because we always have lagging on the reimbursements that we get from the state, so that, that should not be an issue. We also, student obligations increased again, and there was some discussion about the administration should possibly check into if there's a way to find some internal staff, either through stipends or efficiencies, to free up Martha Jo about debt collection, so that that can be pursued a little bit more routinely because Martha Jo has all the rest of the stuff to do, and so that would be, that would be a good thing. So we'll get a report back from the administration on that. There was some budget transfers that, that had been made, that we voted to come out of the contingency, school committee contingency, to the total of a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars and twenty, a hundred and twenty-four thousand and twenty-nine dollars, and that is the tuition for placements on the new students. That was ninety-one thousand of that, four hundred and eight dollars. There was a course reimbursement that needed to be, needed to happen, contract retros because of those groups that we settled in this year. The new supervisors, the must-moderers, and the card and guys to, you know, get a little cushion between minimum wage, and there was a veterans' teacher salary for only eight-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars that needed to be increased. And Plum Cove clerk, what was that, about fifty-six hundred?
Admin assistant.
Admin assistant, she was placed out of the first, she wasn't given, given credit for her experience from last year.
So we're making our hole.
Yes.
Yeah. And then there was a GTA retirement account of three thousand dollars. So that we, that was a motion and recommendation that came out of BNF, and we can vote on that right now if you want to, this is to come out of the school committee's main office contingency for a hundred and twenty-four thousand twenty-nine dollars, and I so moved. Okay, that's no problem. Yeah, we can, we can...
Either that or I can ask the questions, I just want to go to the...
Well, feel free to ask a question.
Well, do you want to make the motion?
He just did.
Nice, I can do it. That's why I asked.
You did order it?
Yeah.
Okay, well, just for the, you, you have, for the record, you were a little vague on the numbers, I don't have a doubt, but the actual numbers here, if you'd like, you know.
I can read them. All right, so what, go ahead.
Authorize the CFO to appropriate a hundred and twenty-four thousand twenty-nine dollars from the main office contingency account for the following items. Tuition for placements, our district placements, ninety-one thousand four hundred and eight dollars. GTA retirement account, one thousand dollars. Plum Cove clerk, five thousand six hundred and eleven dollars. Veterans' teacher salary, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Contract retros, FY nineteen, twenty-three thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars, and a course reimbursement of one thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
So that's... Well, we can wait for the minutes.
I don't mind, I just have a question about one moment, if you can answer that, I'm fine. It's the placement one, I don't, I'm questioning why it's coming out of contingency instead of spread.
Is that's what we have that contingency for, is out-of-district tuition?
Okay, I thought it was the other, I thought it was the...
That it is this two-hundred thousand dollars, it didn't do the school committee, that's what this is? That's what we're taking it out of.
Okay.
You, you understand what I'm...
I thought we had a different line item for the placements, that's all.
We're, to be, just to be clear, we're moving, doing a budget transfer, taking this money from the contingency...
Putting it into the other.
Putting it into the tuition outplacement.
Right, I just thought we had more money in that, I didn't know we had to do that process, I thought it was more money in the, the placement fund than...
No. This was a spring placement.
So this was an unexpected placement?
This was the unexpected place, we had four of them, remember? And so this is FY nineteen's increased costs. We're going to have those increased...
So we didn't plan on this, we didn't know about...
We didn't, and that's why we had that two-hundred thousand dollar contingency that's should be called school committee contingency, because we have that really primarily for this purpose. Because we remember all those years we kept getting two and three hundred thousand dollars in October, so we started planning for it.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Present.
Opposed? It carries six in favor and one present.
Okay, now we have a couple of entertaining little talks. Payroll overpayments. So through miscommunications, a teacher was out on FMLA, she exhausted her sick days, and was paid for twenty-five days before payroll learned that she should not be receiving paychecks. The school clerk did not mark the teacher's absence on the time, she did not record it in ESOP, and therefore the teacher's pay was not turned off. The teacher is indicated that she is coming back to work on June third, this is a maternity leave. We have requested the teacher pay back the money with a check where we can recover the funds from the four summer payrolls, and the amount is eighty-two thirty-two. This has been brought to the administration's attention that this, that the process is in place, it just needs to be dealt with. Do you have any, did you discuss any today?
We have. Just to, just to amplify what you said, teachers normally report absences in ESOP. The teacher asked whether or not to continue this practice, and the answer she received was that it was not necessary since that long-term sub was needed, that was a mistake. The school secretary said that since the absence record was not in ESOP, that the absences were not on her radar, but she still should have been recording. So that's two things that, that took place. In terms of going forward, the, the question of whether or not the teacher needs to record the absences, that has, we've addressed that. The school secretary's responsibility for making sure that absences are on the time sheets, those submitted bi-weekly, I believe. And we're also going to have Maria who deals with the ESOP and the attendance, she's going to continue to keep track of all FMLA absences going forward and coordinate that information with what the building secretaries and what payroll are putting out, so in effect, that will be a double check and a cross-reference of the PIS, the Personnel Action Forms, to make sure that we have another piece in place so this doesn't happen.
I have a question. You had mentioned potentially getting the money back from summer pay, are we going to have an issue of going into a different fiscal year and not having the money? Is that...
That may come with, that's, that's come with from this year.
Oh, for the legal, legal fiscal year change.
What's wrong with that?
Um, yeah, no, we pay the, August payroll comes out of FY, July and August comes out of...
Oh, because it's...
This is just for information.
Does it have a, for information, it's just, it's an eighty-two-hundred-dollar impact to the budget rate this particular...
Right, okay.
All right, the next item was a, a teacher resigned at the high school. On, the resignation was effective March fifteenth. On Monday morning, March twenty...
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth. On March twenty, on March eighteenth, Monday morning at six o'clock, this teacher called the principal or emailed the principal.
Emailed the principal.
Emailed the principal and said, I quit. So because this teacher was on a twenty-one-day pay cycle, they paid in advance. So on the twenty-sixth day, it's twenty-six pay cycles, they're paid in arrears. This is a, it's a system inherited, system complication. Anyway, it was caught the day before payroll was supposed to go out. The district reached out to the city, but it just, it couldn't happen fast enough to stop the payroll. Since then, Gary has been meeting with John Dunn to, if this occurs in the future, how can we fast-track this to stop, stop the payment? So this particular person was paid for, well, in the amount of, I guess it's two weeks pay, fifty-two hundred, fifty-two ninety-eight.
Who was this person? Why not? Why not?
I can't name that now.
Why couldn't you name that now? Explain why you can't name that now.
This person's not related. Absolutely.
They're not here.
This is, we're not telling character, this is fact, it was a county error.
A teacher.
A county error.
Yeah.
A county error was made relating to a teacher, that's not prior information.
The issue is the county error, not the teacher.
Well, is this a fact of the county error? An employee that says you received extra money?
Person in public.
But, but where, where is it?
But I don't know.
But I'm just saying, we're on the airside of caution right now.
I'm not going to make a mistake if you, if we'll find out and...
If you, we may, but sometimes publishing plus salaries, the top twenty-six dollars to the city.
Right, so if you do a public inquiry, you'll get that information, but to say here in the meeting while it's happening is probably different.
So... He does have a, he does have, as a school committee member, he does have a right to know privately, and he also, now she's no longer an employee, she quit, or he quit. So actually, there is no more...
Principal issues.
I know, but let me tell you something, there's no more person, you can tell them whenever you want, I don't want to know the name myself, you know, it wasn't her fault. But the person who quit is no longer protected by the personnel issues, just so you know, they quit. They're no longer employed, he has a right to know if you choose, tell them, I don't need to know, but... I mean, first of all, this is the second time this happened, I guess, the first time we made an error, we need to stop making these errors because technically we need to learn and find how we can stop tracking, I'm glad you're working with John Dunn on the city side, because I'm sure there's, there's always errors and stuff, but the fact is, it's difficult when we don't have money, then have to come find these money, and then it's also difficult, it's not fair that this person thinks they're supposed to get paid, and now we no longer has a job or has a baby out of maternity leave, and then to say, well, you either have to pay us eight thousand dollars or your salary's going to be cut during the summer, which you really need to actually survive on too, it's not fair either way, so...
Well, there are two different issues.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying, it's still errors.
The thing about overpaying people, because if you, if you divide, they're contractual for years for the hundred and eighty-two days, eighty-three, under eighty-three days, excuse me. And then, but they're, they're paid over the twenty-one pay periods. And so just because of the calendar, because of the school vacations and this and that, there's actually a point where we're paying them in advances, that's, that's correct.
Correct, on the twenty-one, definitely.
On the twenty-one, and so that's what happened, and the, the issue there is, is how, how can we stop payroll quickly when we find these things out? It's not, it's not something that somebody did wrong per se, you know, not happy about people quitting, you know, just on a day and saying, I'm not coming in anymore because the way the payroll is set up. But, but that is, that's an administrative problem, that's not something that's a problem with a person.
Well, sorry, they didn't do anything wrong, they quit, absolutely, they left a shot standing, now you have to get a, a full-time substitute. But the person on maternity leave, okay, and that was an error too, and that's an error of who's supposed to be reporting these, if you're on...
Well, we heard, we heard the report.
Exactly, but the fact is, we need, it's, it's, I'm not blaming the school or anyone else, we need to correct these things, because eight thousand, eight thousand, that's sixteen thousand, you need something, I mean, I'm just saying that we, because it's not also fair for the person who has to pay back either, who didn't...
The person has some responsibility to do that.
Absolutely, but you know...
They knew they were getting paid.
Well, then, there you go.
This is, this is not...
If they knew they were getting paid, shame on them then. Okay, there you go, he chose not wrong. Joe.
Yeah, so the other thing we just talked about, the FY twenty budget being, you know, constantly moving right now, that was about it.
Okay, I'll set, we'll move on to action items. We have one grant to accept, the Northeast Coalition Grant for the amount of five hundred dollars to Gloucester High School and... And this, the funds will be used to support suicide prevention and mental health awareness of Gloucester High School.
Awesome.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. New nine, Massachusetts School Building Authority Project update. Okay, we had a meeting of the Subcommittee for Communications of the Building Committee on Monday, which was attended by, I would, I'm just going to guess about fifteen, ten or fifteen people from Green Street?
Monday?
Last Monday.
About six.
Six? I guess, or other people. And that was the ongoing discussion about Green Street, a lot of, we tried to put a lot of people's concerns to rest, at least in the sense that decisions have not been made yet, and we don't have, we have received... uh, decisions have not been made yet, and, uh, we don't, um, have, uh, we have received, um, the title, uh, the titles, um, for, um, the Green Street, um, sites. We've not received the ones for East Gloucester Vets, and we are yet to know, the city's still working on exactly what it all means. So, we have, we're not any further along, um, as far as knowing whether we have clear title taken in those sites and whether we can move forward with, um, due technical, um, surveys as, as well as, uh, environmental surveys and traffic surveys and all of those things, none of which have been done, but will be done on all the sites. Um, there's a meeting tomorrow of the School Building Authority. There won't be a lot on the agenda, they're pretty, basically gonna be looking at the change in the schedule, the pushback, um, where we are today, um, in anticipation of where we're going to end up. Um, but basically, we're, we're running, um, two to three months behind the original schedule. Um, and the, um, we'll probably be talking about the, um, the, the score sheet that we'll use to evaluate sites, um, but that's probably about all that's gonna be on the agenda, is on the agenda for tomorrow. Um, any else that we, uh?
Not there, the, uh, Doran Widdier continues to do investigations with respect to preschool. Uh, they've, uh, conducted, uh, their, their survey of questions with us, uh, converting them to, into a space summary, and now they're beginning to look at the middle school and probably the high schools as well. We've received no information as to, or any conclusions or any judgments, but I know that they're in process to implement.
But on that, on that same note, they have submitted the, the information on the fieldhouse floor, the fieldhouse is going to BNF. BNF is a, has approved it, and I believe it will be going on to the city council agenda for their next meeting, um, their first meeting in May.
So, I feel like, to keep saying this, we are probably already beyond the timeline. So, even if, you know, if Doran Widdier comes back in three or four months, hey, guess what? O'Malley's a great site. Well, we're probably still gonna be in a position where this lease runs out before O'Malley Preschool is ready to open, so I don't understand why we're not, in this moment, before it's last minute, going to Mick and saying, "Hey Mick, listen, um, we need to, can we talk about keeping the terms of this lease, pushing it out?" Because, you know, landlords like advanced notice. And we said, we said, "We keep the, the buy option, we want the buy option," that we just kinda like to restart the lease, you know? Because otherwise, we're gonna end up in a position where, even if here isn't the answer, we're gonna be homeless for a preschool and an admin while we're in this limbo of, oh, the new place isn't ready yet, this lease expired, and again, you know, Mick is under no obligation if we come from ninety days ahead and say, "Hey, please extend." He, he, he almost said no last time, he can say no this time, and then we're in a real tough spot, where we're gonna end up buying a building that is not recommended by Doran Widdier, because it's the only way we don't end up without a facility. You know, O'Malley would've been great, we ran out of time for O'Malley, so we're stuck buying this building even though we thought O'Malley would've been good.
The, my understanding of the lease, Joel, is there's a three-year lease, this is the first year of the lease.
But then option took that.
There's an option, there's-
What's that?
There are two options to extend it, for two more, for a year at a time.
Yes.
So, it's really a five-year lease. And there is a, a fixed price in to buy the building, which is, which extends for the full length of the lease, so-
So, we're confident this is those, those options?
Yes.
Not, not, that I'm under a misunderstanding. I was under the misunderstanding that it was just three years with no options.
No, 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 that's not true.
But I'm, I'm mistaken on the fact of case.
Believe me, I made, I made the deal with Mick, I know the deal.
Listen, I think you-
All right, so we're, and we, which is not to say we should not keep the press trouble, trying to get this resolved.
He actually wanted the deal that way, so we don't have it at the last minute, so he doesn't have an option what to do. So, he, in, in this way, we have enough time, so it's basically like a five-year with an option already, a, a fixed rate if we choose, that there is no, it would be cheaper to buy than it would to go repair.
So, with all that, Dan, so can I ask a question of the timeline of when we will know if there's a better option than here?
We won't know anything until they do the study.
And what is the timeline on the study?
Um, I, I don't know.
I would imagine the next four months or so.
Yeah, they're, we, they're working on it, it's not like they're not.
No, no, no.
We gave them the money, they're working on it, they're looking at, they're looking at everything.
To Joel's point, are we gonna know in September? Is it gonna be December? You know, because it-
Well, don't forget too, we have to also look at-
We can find out.
Once we get the, once we get the report back, we have to look at the options.
Exactly.
So, if he says it's gonna be four million dollars, do we wanna spend it repairing this, or, let's say, O'Malley? And put in our own building, or do you wanna do that? And if we do, how do we finance that?
Exactly.
Well, you're building a new school, well, we need other things that have to, I mean, it's not easy.
No, I know, and that's why I'm saying it's gonna be one-
And we're, we're, we need to look at a lot of different issues and how we're gonna work this together, because if it does come up an option that's saying, okay, yes, you can do O'Malley, but O'Malley can do partially there, and then partially you'll have to repair, let's say, the high school for the administration, um, and it's gonna cost five to six million, and this is gonna be three. Do we wanna spend it? Is it our building? Are we repairing this in the buildings? I mean, there's a lot of options and things that we need to look at. And then how are we gonna finance it?
Mm-hmm.
How are we gonna finance it? I mean, right now, we're financing, you know, the rental and stuff, so, and it, and it's, honestly, if you would've thought about, no, I'm not blaming anyone, if we would've done this from day one, actually, what we're paying for lease would've been cheaper than a mortgage, and, or a bond to borrow, and we, this building could've been ours way before, but that was before, and this is now, and we're more forward together.
So, can I ask procedurally? Um, so when that report is ready, is that coming to the administration, or does that come to the school?
It's coming to the school.
Yeah.
We paid for it, and we're all gonna have to discuss it, it's gonna have to be both of, I mean, it's gonna have to, all of us, we have to make the decision. What it was is, we, we just wanted a plan, and we wanted, we wanted us to initiate all our options. You know, we hear from parents saying, "Well, why aren't you repairing this? Why are you paying extra this?" Taxpayers wanna know where the money's going. "Well, you've got pawn road, how come you haven't built a government center? How come you haven't?" We wanna address all issues, to say, "Look, we are now, like we said, we promised that when we had the money for Fuller, and we had the things, we'll work with the schools to get to some of the things and projects done." We, like you said, you just heard from the DPW, what can we do this summer? We are finally working together, let's not think negative, let's think how we're gonna invest our children.
But procedurally, um, the, um, the school committee has to, has to sign off on.
Okay.
Um, are there any other items that anybody would like to bring up on their new business or?
Just on this survey that we mentioned, I wanna mention that too. It's taken longer because of just all the title searches, but now we're asking different things too. We're asking, you know, title search, the water, environment, so, when, it's not that the administration or Chip, our city solicitor's not doing something, we thought we could, we could be able to do just that. Now, we're asking a little bit more. I think we're gonna discuss maybe that we should hire someone from outside to really look at all of these, because, so we can actually get an answer, because I was talking